Good evening and welcome to the November 6, 2025 council work session. So this one's going to divert from what we usually do. First, we're going to start off with Stas is going to give an update on what we're going to do to make communication a little bit better between the citizens and ourselves.
Thank you, Mayor. So we've been, staff has been working on multiple avenues to improve communication between the city and the residents. First of all, I would like to start that our newsletters have been, our newsletters are coming back. So the most recent one was published in October. The next, in September, my apologies, the next one will be published in December. From the last roundtable discussion, multiple people have expressed that the newsletters weren't as informational, so the newsletters will continue to become more informational as they go. Additionally, part of the new year in 2026, there will be six iterations of the newsletter. So there will be six publications, it will be sub-monthly, you know, and contain project updates, ordinance updates, things of that sort. Additionally, from our, from Facebook, a lot of you may have noticed that the Facebook Live videos have been deleted. That is according to meta policies. Every 30 days, meta will delete from the city's Facebook page, and that is not under the city's control. So the way that we started that, there's been a YouTube channel that's been created, and from going forward, every single council meeting and work session meeting will be published on that YouTube channel. Additionally, Ask the Mayor will be live next week. That is something that the mayor has wanted and council has wanted, and they have expressed that, that has now gone live. And behind that is anyone who has any questions to the mayor. They can go under our portal and submit that question, and that, and the mayor will go over that question and respond accordingly. There's parts where we want to include that in our YouTube and Facebook Live. And that's all I have. If anyone has any questions, I'm doing, I can talk about that.
And we've also revamped the sound system as well. So if anybody's watching on Facebook and the sound isn't where it needs to be, let me know, we can make some further adjustments. But as of now, yeah, we added to the system, so.
I do want to say that I know part of the discussion was continuing, updating discussions. Now, when it comes to council, I think the thought moving forward is to do that on the last Tuesday of every month going forward. There'll all be a roundtable, but you're invited to. It will not be streaming on Facebook, because a lot of people have expressed that they don't want, they'd speak up better when there is, it isn't there. So that is everyone a chance to speak, but they won't be live. There's some other things that staff is working on. Those, there'll be more updates to come in regards to.
And I did want to clarify one thing. So the Ask the Mayor is for lighter questions. On those, I don't want to go into depth about something really serious. This happened because a, someone sent me a video asking me how road names were named, and it was a little girl on her way to school, so I answered it back with a video. And the mom said how much she loved that and everything, was showing her classmates. So more stuff like that, for that, the lighter stuff for the Ask the Mayor, but if you really have a question, I mean, at this point, everybody in Trenton has my phone number, I think, so you can just call me.
We understand that communication is a very essential part between, between the city and the residents. So I believe these small incremental steps will improve that. I'm excited about it, and I look forward to our residents and those improvements.
And I also think we're going to try to add a frequently asked questions to the website as well.
Yes, we are working on that, and I do not think that will be a hard thing to implement, and we will, we'll certainly add that.
Okay, if you have, I saw a couple of hands go up. So if you have any questions about the commute, the new way of communicating, please ask them. We are going to have a, a presentation by staff, because there are a lot of rumors going around, and a lot of it just simply isn't true. So we're going to go ahead and do a presentation on zoning. We're also going to do one on legal and financial. So if you have any questions about the communication?
I think the answer to the question I was going to add was about the roundtable. We do need better communication, because I've been over the city, I've done it by, a lot going through the do not knock, I've been talking to people that's outside, around people, people walking. And Ryan, there's nobody here that knows what's going on unless they read it on Trenton Talk, unless they see it in the news, which we're finally starting to get through News Journal or WLWT, Fox 19. That's a shame.
Oh, it is.
The reason why I'm saying that, some people here have to work second shift. Some people have kids that they got to go to different appointments with. Some people have to take care of their mother or their father. I had to do that with six years for my mother-in-law until she passed away this year. Some people physically can't make it here, or they have a problem trying to go through the website. And for some people, that's, even for me, sometimes I'm looking for things that might be financial, or looking for things that Mr. Barris, whoever he has posted or something, y'all posted, it's very hard for people to navigate the website.
Yeah.
Everybody, everybody I've talked to has questioned, well, how come we get flyers concerning what's going on with, over in the park, when you have the movie at the park, but we can't get nothing we need when it comes to something so important that impacts 15,000 of us? And the question of, why can't, why can't they put it up on the beautiful blue board out here? The digital war runs everything, but what's important? People know that things are important to go to things in the park where people can get them with their kids, but they don't see what's really important, what's impacting community as a whole. And that's what we're trying to get to.
It's kind of insulting to start out with communication. Because, no, no, I'm going to be honest here, because this is, this is my first council meeting. I did not come here for communication. Okay? Who is here because of the data center? Raise your hands. Or solar farms, or anything else that we didn't know was going on?
Why is it your first council?
Okay? I.
All right, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Let's do, let's do this before we, before we go any further. Let's, let's do this. Please respect the person that's talking here. Second, the reason why we did that is when we had the roundtable, a lot of what we noticed was it was a communication problem. Because on council, we're, we read all of this numerous times, and we had nobody at the council meetings, and no one spoke up and said anything until we were done. So what we're saying is, okay, how do we reach you better? That's why we started off with that.
Okay, this is my son Gavin. Gavin, say hi to everybody.
Hello Gavin.
A lot of you already know him, okay? He's a handshaker. But if he throws a rock through a window, I'm not going to turn around and say, let's talk about why you threw the rock through the window and make sure it doesn't happen again. We're going to fix the window. And that's what we're here for. What are we going to do? What can we do?
I think we've, I'm sorry, sir, we bared off of what we were talking about. Let us do our presentation, and then we have speaking. Who would like to start?
I will start. Thank you, Mayor. So just a touch on zoning. There are three overall zoning districts within the city of Trenton. Those would be residential, commercial, and industrial. There are subcategories within those districts, RE, R1, R2, R3, R4, commercial as several districts, as well as industrial. All cities, all park properties and parcels within the city limits fall within one of those zoning districts or are rezoned as a PUD designation. There is not a zoning district for green space, open space, or agricultural. However, that does not mean that farming cannot occur on those parcels. Farming is a permitted use within all of those zoning districts. To change a parcel from one type of zoning district to another, there is a process that must occur. That process is an application submitted from the property owner. It has to be reduced to an ordinance, read first by city council, referred to planning commission for review. A public notice is then put out for a public hearing at a future date. Planning commission reviews, obtains input, and then makes a recommendation to council to approve or deny the rezoning. Goes back to council at a separate council meeting. At that council meeting, a public hearing is held no sooner than 30 days after the legal notice of the public hearing for when that notice goes out. Only after then, council may adopt or reject the proposed rezoning. And then again, just designating, just showing the different zoning types on the map. Most of Trenton residentially is zoned R2. On the southern portion of town, most of the zoning is industrial, that is where the industrial park is located. Most of the industrial zones are zoned general industrial, IG. And within each of those districts, there are permitted by right uses within each zoning district. The industrial general district is the broadest industrial zoning, and is typically associated with heavy industrial type uses. On the screen are several of those, are all of those permitted by right uses that are allowable within the general industrial zoning district. What that means is that if a company purchases property or owns property within the general industrial zoning district, if they want to locate their business there, and it falls within one of those categories such as asphalt product manufacturing, a foundry, or a self-storage facility, if, as long as they meet the appropriate setbacks and other requirements of the general industrial zoning district, they would be permitted to locate there. A conditional use is when there are additional considerations that are associated with that specific type of use. For example, the commercial solar farm is a conditional use within the general industrial zoning district. As such, there are additional requirements above and beyond what is written in the general industrial permitted use regulations, such as decommissioning plan needs to be submitted. Noise requirements, and one thing I wanted to mention on the noise requirement, is that the permitted by right uses that were previously shown do not, they have a specific noise decibel range associated with that general industrial zoning district. And because of that, they have to abide by those. With the conditional use of commercial solar farm, there are specific noise requirements. And in comparison, the 50 to 55 decibel falls on the lower end of the maximum permitted decibel sound level for that general industrial district. Additionally, there are glare requirements that are, that are written into the code, and this is language that I'm pulling specific from the code, is that any glare resulting from the solar development will be mitigated through vegetative screening or otherwise block. And that is something that, that solar farm would have to adhere to.
And pay for?
Correct. It is in our code.
Taxpayer expenses?
Correct. That is, that is.
Correct, that's the taxpayer's expenses.
No, me.
Yes, the solar farm.
Yes, the solar farm. So that would be, it, it would fall into a code enforcement issue, because they would be violating our code at that point in time. Additionally, I wanted to mention that any applicant who is permitted under that conditional use, before they begin commencement of operations, they have to receive other regulatory agency approval to, to finalize it. So they have to receive their county permits, state permits, federal permits. They have to go through that entire process before they can commence operation. So the other project I wanted to touch on is Phase 2 of our industrial park, and I've got a picture on the screen, and I just kind of wanted to geographically locate it. So there's Pennell Road at the top of the screen. North of Pennell Road, there's roughly 100 acres of land, and then Trenton residents. South of Pennell Road is roughly 100 acres of land, and then past those 200 acres of land is the Trenton industrial park. Pearson Road is one of the dividing lines. So west of Pearson Road, north of Pennell, is Carvana. West of Pearson Road, south of Pennell, is Shape Corp's industrial facility. And then just south of that facility is the Phase 2 industrial park. Additionally, as you can see on the screen, there is trees that buffer to the east, and then touching the property to the south adjacent is the Duke facility. And to note that any industrial development that has occurred in Trenton and will occur in Trenton is required to follow codified ordinances such as our noise regulations. As mentioned, there are noise regulations for the industrial zoning district, water service regulations, sewer service regulations, as well as any other zoning district rules that may apply to that use.
Can I ask a question right quick? What are the penalties if they break those noise ordinance?
Those would be violations, and I'd have to refer to our city attorney, but there are violations.
There are, there are civil violations that recur on a daily basis. So if we get to enforce that, it's a daily enforcement, and then beyond that, there's civil remedies available in our code through county injunctions to cease operations on those facilities if they continue to violate.
So initially, what do you do? Find them?
You, you start issuing the citations daily, and then if there's not compliance, you file for an injunctive relief in county court.
Okay, and the other question I had is, how do you zone something industrial? How do you decide that something is industrial?
So the comprehensive plan that was adopted in 2022, I believe, outlines a future land use map that shows all the parcels within the city of Trenton, as well as land outside of it. And the feedback received from that comprehensive plan process, as well as staff and council input, designates what zoning district should be in the future. And it doesn't mean that it is zoned that way, it means that in the future, by 2050 is when the comprehensive plan ends, is, that's kind of the thought of the future land.
Yeah, I've read all that. I have read your plan.
I have two questions, if I can. I don't know if this is the time for it or not.
If they're, if they're brief, yeah.
So my, my first question is, if there is hypothetically a data center already planned, and hypothetically a solar farm, are these the only ones that we could expect? Or are we just saying, if the people come in with the right amount of money, we can see two or three data centers in Trenton, we can see two or three solar farms in Trenton? Is, is there, you're, you're showing all this, that's great. Thanks for educating us. How do we, how do we stop? If we are not in favor of this, how do we stop it?
So at this point, the only project that we are talking about is the industrial park project.
Is it truly a million square feet data center that we're looking at?
So we have not received site plans yet, and when that comes forward, there'll be a planning commission meeting that will be held, because there is an internal review process, much like we did with Duncan. They submit the site plans, we review those site plans internally to make sure that they adhere to our zoning code and the regulations, and then it goes before planning commission for their review and approval.
So millions square feet has just been arranged or numbered around?
It's, yes, we have had, we've had no negotiation with them on anything, because I've heard a lot of rumors, like, we've already given them a 30-year abatement. That actually isn't anything we've ever discussed with them. We don't even know what.
No abatement at all is not discussed.
No abatement at all has been discussed. No, we're just in the, they purchased the property. Now let's do some road studies, let's work it out and see where we're at, and come to a mutual agreement if this goes forward on what it'll look like.
That was discussed today with one of the business owners here in town, and he goes, I've got a business, I didn't even get this kind of a break. He goes, why are they doing this for everybody else? And that was one of the things he had already heard too, prior to. So I mean, it's a lot of things going on.
Yes, there's a lot of false information that's going out there.
The thing I want to ask you is, yeah, we got, we're going to try to do sound ordinances. I know we're even doing sound ordinances tonight. But how can we measure sound if we don't have the proper equipment, according to the notes from a few months back, when y'all talked to, what councilman Nichols did? As whether the city owns equipment to measure the sound bubbles, and Lieutenant Rossville applied the current police code, doesn't involve decibel reading.
So we have phones with apps.
So how do we measure it and know if they're legal or not?
So again, what that sounds like is a code enforcement issue that happens after the develop, after it's been developed and built out, and then there are issues with sound that we would address at that point.
Yeah, but I'm understanding tonight, we're going to allow more sound than what's legally permitted at the moment. We're going to change those zones.
I think he was just saying they'll be fined if that happens. I don't think we were, is that what you were not implying, we're going to just allow it, right?
Right, no.
And there are consequential steps if they continue.
Yes.
To violate that ordinance, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And what, what is the final, they're just not listening, they would rather pay the cost, because it's still cheaper. Okay, please, it's possible.
Seek, of course, you could seek a court order for a jump to relieve them. Some sort of.
So you could shut them down.
Yeah.
But my, my confusion is, is, this has always been farmland behind my house. I live on Marsha. If you have that map, I look straight out at the road canal. Okay? And city council decided that, oh, that's going to be industrial. I moved there because that was farmland. And you're telling me that, I've got a backyard that's from, not even from here to where you're sitting, and I could have something like this literally right up next to me.
So.
We don't think residential, when we zone these things industrial, that you're backing up right against neighborhood?
Our school?
So with regards to that, I can't speak to how long it's been zoned industrial, but that property has been zoned industrial for at least a decade, if not 20 years or so. When I look back at the 20, it's the 2005 comprehensive plan that was adopted and expired in 2025, that land was zoned industrial back then.
So is it industrial plus agricultural? Or, I mean, or are they the same thing?
So it's, we do not have an agricultural zoning district. It is, it is commercial zoning, it is residential zoning, or industrial zoning. There is no agricultural or farming zoning district on our books.
Please, please continue.
I'm going to talk about water supply, so availability of water. Within the city limits, there's a section of our code that says private wells are not permitted within city limits. That is applicable to within the city of Trenton limits. So as it relates to water and wastewater, I cannot speak to what has occurred in other states, I cannot speak to what has occurred in other jurisdictions, I can only speak to the city of Trenton and how the city of Trenton works a public account. So this is applicable only to within Trenton city limits. If the development sites outside of the city limits, they may be permitted to drill a private well and pull directly from the aquifer. I believe there are state regulations in place that dictate that. However, I'm not understanding of what those are, because we do not permit private wells within the city limits. Additionally, the city of Trenton is the water provider for development projects within its service boundary area, and as the water provider for all residents, residents of the community, our priority is to ensure that we have water capacity for our residents. That's first and foremost.
So what studies have been done to this point regarding the data center that may or may not be coming here?
As far as.
What studies have been done?
Can you supply the data center with water in the citizens successfully?
So again, as, as was previously mentioned, we don't have a site plan in place, we do not have a water service agreement in place, anything of that nature. Our facility has the ability to expand. When it was originally built, it was built with expansion in mind, knowing that the city will grow over time.
So with that being said, there was a meeting that was in July, but there was a question presented to all seven of you, what was goals? And every one of you, number one was water. And it was that we were losing 40% water, how can we get it down to 35% water? I'm going to quote you, Mr. Ryan.
Correct.
I'm not trying to be attacking, but I'm saying what's facts, to get it down to 30%. If we're losing 40%, 35%, 30% already, and we don't know where it's coming from, and we can't fix it, we got blue max pipes that bust constantly throughout the city, they're going to put this major more bunch of water onto that system where we pop more pipes, how can we sustain it at 40% loss?
I appreciate that question. So one of the things that staff has been working on is addressing the water loss concern. Additionally, every year, the city tries to apply to the Ohio Public Works Commission for water line replacement, water main replacement, which additionally, in conjunction with that, allows us to repave a road. This year, the project is East Aberdeen, and that replaces all the water line services, as well as any main repairs that need replaced, and then provides new paving on that roadway. Additionally, staff has been looking at water meters, and we have been finding that some of our water meters are in place correctly, but then maybe the reading head is incorrect, or there is a leak that needs replaced, and staff has been working on that and working very diligently since that conversation has occurred.
So can we get the water problem fixed and the pipes in before we get a data center?
We are looking very diligently and working very diligently. Staff is doing an amazing job at pinpointing leaks, whether it's old equipment that needs replaced, looking at the roughly top 25 water users, and ensuring those meters are correct and up to date, so that way we are billing appropriately. And then also doing leak correlation and trying to pinpoint where leaks are in the system and replace those as we go. So staff is.
The diaphragm, the stuff y'all been putting in, different manholes and stuff, trying to track the water, whatever's going on, that was the cases.
Yeah, yeah, staff is working very diligently on that, yeah. And has.
And to that point, as far as my last reading goes, the way that water loss is calculated, we know how much our plant loses, and then we add all of the meter readings that we receive in the utility building office together, and the difference between those two is the calculated water loss.
Right.
And we were already in my last reading, which was two months ago, down to 37.5%. Rather quickly, we shaved two and a half percent off of that.
But there's still a lot. We're looking at a project that might be here about 2030, 2028.
And staff has worked diligently since then. At the end of the year, I intend on re, recapitulating those and showing the current outcome. Unfortunately, our bills, as you know, go out pretty much 45 days after the previous reading, so there is a lag time, and how we, you know, can redo the calculate, we're working on something.
I would also, one thing real quick on that, that the, while the goal is 0%, the average throughout the state is more than 25% water loss in any water system. It's just by its very nature.
But even with that.
I'm just giving you the.
I understand that, and I appreciate that, but even with that, can we sustain 20, 30, 40 years of maybe one, multiple data centers that might be going down below Miller? God knows, I know one of the properties was sold. Can we sustain that on the aquifer we have? Because I've talked to a professional well digger, I've also contacted a DNR, and the response I get is no, this aquifer cannot sustain that kind of water for that long until we don't have water ourselves to drink.
I feel like maybe, maybe if I could just make a statement, not necessarily a question, I feel like maybe, I think we all came in thinking, one, that it was a done deal, you've already had the plan, it was a million, so of course, we know their purpose. I appreciate that being here.
Yes.
I feel like maybe at this point, the meeting kind of needs to change gears to, obviously, whatever you all need to address. But I feel like you're not going to be able to answer specific questions as to the data center, because there is no truly plan, other than the land has been bought and sold. So would it be fair to gear the questions more to what is negotiable? When do they come back with a business plan? Like, are you guys able to negotiate and say, hey, we, we need data centers? I, against a million square foot, obviously, going in Trenton, I'm not for that. We all live, eat, sleep, and breathe by data center, so it's ridiculous to say anybody here doesn't want one, we all need them. I don't know.
I'll give my number right now.
You don't believe in that, right? My backyard, I'm going to give you a cell phone.
You communicate with your phone.
I'll give it to you down there.
Okay, okay, let's, let's stay on.
You guys can't answer specific questions, I get that, because you don't have a plan.
Right.
I think the concerns are what is negotiable? Are you, is, if they want a tax payment, are you guys going to give that? If, if infrastructure is needed, because they're going to tear up the roads or buildings, are you guys going to negotiate that they are going to pay for that, not the citizens?
We will, yes, we will do a traffic impact study, we will also do an environmental, and then that all works together with any abatement they might want, and then we just discuss it and see where the best, how we come out.
I have a lot more questions, obviously. I'm not saying that I have a lot of questions, but you guys aren't going to be able to answer those questions, because you don't know what the plan is.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Nichols. discuss it and see where the best, how we come out.
I have a lot more questions. Obviously, I'm not saying that I have a lot of questions, but you guys aren't going to be able to answer those questions because you don't know what the plan is.
Absolutely. Go ahead, Mr. Nichols.
I've got a couple more slides, and then our finance director has information as it relates to incentives and what other communities have done and everything related financially.
Okay. I think that's everybody's big question.
Well, one that I think could be answered, and maybe I stated it wrong, because I don't feel like you did answer the question. Hypothetically, could there be more than one data center? And hypothetically, could there be more than one solar farm in Trenton?
So within current city of Trenton boundaries, the industrial park is the extent of our boundary line?
Yes or no? Is all that being told, is all the industrial-
Yes.
The answer is there, there is no ability for Trenton to grow anymore at this point.
If you go outside of Trenton, you've got Madison Township and you've got St. Clair Township.
Yeah. Okay, 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 okay. Let's get back on, let's get back on point here. Go ahead, Mr. Nichols.
Okay.
No, you're okay.
From a wastewater perspective, sanitary sewer, again, I can't speak to what other states have done. I can't speak to what other jurisdictions have done with regards to sanitary sewer and wastewater. The city is responsible for providing sanitary sewer distribution. What that means is any wastewater discharge from commercial or industrial projects, the city of Trenton maintains the sewer lines, which are the distribution lines throughout the city. The wastewater then flows out of the city and to a Butler County Water and Sewer Treatment Plant. Butler County Water and Sewer processes that wastewater. The city of Trenton communicates with Butler County Water and Sewer regarding projects to ensure that the county's water treatment plant has the capacity and the ability to process that wastewater. Because Butler County Water and Sewer has OEPA requirements that they have to meet and things of that, that nature. So they are concerned about what goes into wastewater lines as well. We have open communication regarding that. I can't speak to specifically what's in the wastewater. Again, that is not something that we typically have with businesses. That conversation usually happens with Butler County Water and Sewer because they are the ones that process that wastewater. Additionally, for larger projects, the county requires a testing area on site to ensure that the wastewater that is being sent out of the building is accurate to what was being discussed being sent out of the building. So for example, Shape Corp. and Carvana, the two businesses that are currently in industrial park phase one, those have on-site wastewater processing areas for county, Butler County Water and Sewer staff to come and check that wastewater. So again, just as a way to encourage growth in the community, we work with other agencies to ensure that the growth is manageable, that our, our region can handle that. And then the last thing I did want to mention is something that our clerk of counsel has kind of taken on board. A lot of this stuff is talked about to a certain extent in our citizens academy with regards to zoning, how public works, works, what they do, police department, fire department. And I just wanted to give a pitch to that for anybody in the room or watching on Facebook. Application is due by January 16th, and the academy starts on the 22nd. And I know there are several people in this room that have attended, and I've heard nothing but good things from them.
Thank you, Mr. Nichols. You have been waiting very, very patiently, and I thank you for that.
So I've seen a lot of things on Facebook about riders, surcharges, and carriers going to increase to help offset the costs of their water and utilities, and it's going to be offset to us. Is this true? Because our bills are going up astronomically. We also had 30% raise in Duke Energy over the summer.
Yeah.
So if we increase them more, we're going to have people that can't afford their utilities.
We can't speak to Duke, obviously. We're not, we're not going to answer for them. But with us, we already have the capacity in our water treatment plant. Actually, we're adding a major water user, which is good for us because that's just more water we sell. So I think you have the financials, don't you, Mr. Massiskus?
Yes, our margins on our industrial rates, and you'll see some projections later on, should offset the cost of our residential. So over the course of, really, I'll look back three years ago when we had large inflation throughout the entire country. And that's when I came on board here in 2022. By our city ordinances, we were to raise water rates by the same rate of inflation every year. When I came on board, that was not going to be an option because we saw 9.6% inflation at year end 2021 going into 2022. So we froze our rate increases for water and sewer for three years. And that, that would have been a significant issue for our rate payers. There are no riders in the, in the city of Trenton. We do, we build for water, sewer, stormwater. We distribute our streetlights. Some, some places, some cities do it as part of the property tax bill, distribute them. And, and these facilities would pay more than the fair share of residents in terms of visitors. In addition, there are tap fees. They actually have to pay for their right to access our water capacity, the same as any new home that gets built in city limits. As a part of the permit fee sheet, you know, the ton of homes comes in, he has to reserve the water capacity before a connection takes place. And that is $4,000 per home constructed. So that's something that the home builders pay. It's also something that industrial users pay. And we actually, something that Trenton does that's rather unique in Ohio, is we assess industrial users based on the percentage of what a residential user would be. So $4,000 pays for 12,000 gallons per month. And I have, I have a slide on this right now. Question. So that $4,000 is based on 12,000 gallons per month. We upscale that. So if this data center uses a million gallons, we multiply that, and it's a, basically at the end, you'll see it's a $12 million gallon.
So we're going to be the one town with the one data center that our water bills aren't going to go up because of the data center? What's going to happen?
Okay, I have a question, sir. What if it contaminates the water aquifer? Because the data centers traditionally, they put chemicals in the water when they put, when they're recycling. What happens if they contaminate that aquifer? What are we supposed to do for water?
So-
Do you have a backup plan for that?
Within the city of Trenton, there is mandatory sewer hookups. And that's what Mr. Nichols just recently mentioned, is there is a testing facility on site that Butler County actually will maintain and ensure that every bit of effluent from the data center goes through the public sewer system and then is treated by Butler County Water and Sewer.
I think he wants to know if we have a contingency, if some weird freak of nature, they do contaminate. What's the contingency?
I mean, because honestly, sir, we was looking at Miller Brewery because they know water, wouldn't we lose Miller Brewery? And wouldn't we lose the other businesses that are over there?
I-
The owners outside of the city limits.
Excuse me?
Miller is outside of the city limits.
They're not in the city. That's a township.
So that is, that is, that is one-
The aquifer though, sir?
Yes, I do pull out the aquifer approximately 250, 300 feet deep. They're in the deepest part of the aquifer.
So you, you did speak with someone from Miami Conservancy, correct?
Yes, I went to Miami Conservancy and ODNR. I've talked to both of them. And right now, they do not know how much water's down there. Neither one of them knows anything about how much capacity is in that aquifer.
Okay, great. Here, but now it's- My question is, are there some questions?
But there-
Contaminate our water sources. Do you guys have a backup plan for that? Because it's happened in other data centers.
We also have, if I'm, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, we also are hooked up to Southwest Water, correct?
That is correct. It has an emergency connect.
So our system is backed up by Southwest as well, and the other way around.
Okay. With Southwest, I'm going to put it bluntly, pull South, and at the ODNR, I don't know who you talked to, I talked to Lori Emmler. She's the Environmental Specialist Division of Water Resources.
I talked to Craig Nelson.
That's what this guy is. And she said right now, number one, she gave me a list in which I've sent it to, I know Ryan, I think I sent it to Floyd. You can go down and look at every well that's in Butler County and throughout the whole state of Ohio.
I pulled that up already.
Do you know how much each one pulls? Because this will tell you how much each one of these will pull. Miami Conservancy said as far as how much water's down there, he said I can make a guess. He said probably one to have trillion gallons.
That's the number that rated, not even.
And the second thing is that I was at, I've been going to school board meetings two and a half years. They approached the school board to put in a test well on their property where the school is, to be able to measure the aquifer and how the water flows. They told that, they monitor Hamilton and the rest of them, they actually told the school board that that well, whatever goes in at the school, would take one year to get to Miller Brewery Company's wells. One year is what they told us. I was at that meeting.
Somewhere or another, somebody's getting conflicting information through ODNR.
I've been to, like I said, I've got everything, and I'd be more than happy to give her, your number.
All right, Mr. Massiskus, let's, let's continue a couple slides, and then I'll get to you. I promise.
Question here.
What about the people who are outside the city limits on Wayne Madison Road?
So outside the city limits?
When they opened the brewery, I know for a fact that everyone that's up the hill from Woodstown had to redig wells or pour water because it emptied. It dropped the level so low.
So I will say-
You want me to answer that? I retired from, I retired from Miller Brewing Company, ma'am. I'm going to tell you what happened in that situation. Right down here at Shamrock, which Shamrock did not open, own it at that time. It was sold to Jerkison. Jerkison wanted to dig those ponds deeper. They brought in pumps, tried to pump that water, which was aquifer, because when that levels out in those ponds, it's where the aquifer sets. And what happened is they were pumping it, and it was going across Mr. Gorman's property at that time, and the river was rising. And it was lowering your wells. That's what happened. That was not Miller Brewing Company.
But it didn't happen until brewery, the brewery opened.
The pits was being dug and-
They did not, to this day, they cannot use their wells.
That I don't know.
They had to have water holes, or they had to dig a deeper well.
That I have no idea about. But Miller did paper a lot of the wells around there after it was actually done. But it was actually Jerkins that emptied those pits down there. They were pumping it, going across the land down there into the river.
So I guess my, my statement on that as well, when it comes to it, is one thing you have to realize with us is that, number one, we're looking at the safest way this, this would come in. And the point is always, if it went into the township, they would just dig their own wells. And they could take as much water as they possibly could out of those wells. At least here, they are limited with water on what we can produce and give them. But if they were a foot outside of Trenton limits, let's say that they bought property on Duke's land and put the same thing in Duke's land. They could drill the wells. They wouldn't have the control of having to go through city sewers. You would also still get all of the things that the data center is going to bring that you don't like. But you would get no tap-in fees, no water sales, no property tax, and no income tax. So for us, yes, we're, we're looking, and we know that a lot of people are negotiating in this area right now. I mean, there's, data centers are negotiating with a whole lot of people. But for us, we look at this and we think, okay, we can sell to them in the city and sell them all of this stuff and control it that way. Or, I mean, they could make an offer to Duke for the same thing right on the other side of that tree line. And we're still going to get all of this.
So you feel like this was the lesser of two evils?
I definitely feel like this is the less, because think about it.
We don't, because we have liquid.
We're in there.
Well, no, I get it, but-
We don't know.
But you don't get it. You don't, you're not going to have credit.
You just went ahead and gave property away because it was a cash cow. That's all it boils down to.
Okay.
You guys are this city.
No, we, we purchased, we purchased that property with the, with the, with the intent of, can, can you let-
Going to cause more, more chaos already with the fact that our main drag has so much traffic. And it was a blessing to get rid of Mag node because of all the traffic that was backed up beyond. The fact that CSX runs trains through here every 20 minutes. And it takes us literally hours to get home. So adding something like that in here is just going to make it more of a problem for people in here. And it's just more the fact that it was just, who's just going to sell some lands so we can make money?
No, that's not true.
Streets that are still flooding. We have roads that are still not fixed. And then what is-
Hold on, okay. Number one, number one, I'm going to tell you that that's not true, that we sold to the first people with money. We've had plenty of people make offers to us.
It should have been sold for something like a greenhouse, something that was going to benefit people, that wasn't going to reach up our vision.
We heard that there was a universal farm that had wanted to buy some of that.
It should have been done that way.
Those, they stopped negotiating with us. We didn't turn them down. No.
What you got to remember is anybody that has negotiated with us previously, we were one of up to a dozen sites they were considering at the same time. It was never locked in that they were going to buy in Trenton, Ohio. I've read on Facebook where we, we just flat out refused and turned away a dog food manufacturer. False information. That's extremely false. Anytime that anybody came to the city manager and wanted to discuss buying property, they, we were one of multiple locations being considered.
But aren't we supposed to be picky about who we allow in here and what-
If it meets the zoning criteria, we can't be picky.
But it did.
If you change the zoning to technical-
Well, what we, what we did on changing the zoning was if we hadn't created that informational technology zoning within the industrial zoning, then a data farm could have gone anywhere in our industrial zoning. They could, they could have gone right here on State Street in that industrial zoning.
If they come in and-
I think they're saying they chose a place that you control over.
Mr. Ziffel?
I feel like, correct me if I'm wrong, I feel like what you're saying, a data center was coming. A data center was where they were buying any little, and I know that this is true, they are buying every little inch. So you guys felt like where you sold the land was going to be the best for the citizens, if I'm here. You feel like that was the best because the data center was coming. But where you guys decided the data center is going, you had, felt like you had the most control over the process?
Yes, yes.
Am I something else?
Yeah, absolutely. Because they have to follow all of our city codes. They have to go through all of this that-
So we would have had the effects five, five miles up the road
Yes.
in the city.
Could have been a bad one.
You'd have, you'd have the same effect a couple hundred yards up the road.
For, for instance, it would be like Miller. We get a lot of Miller traffic that comes through Trenton. We get how many tund-
600 trailers a day.
We get 600 trailers a day that comes out of Miller Brewing Company. We get zero taxes from Miller.
None.
So that's what could have happened. We could have put them right outside of the city limits, or they could have bought right outside of the city limits, which I wouldn't doubt they were negotiating with that. And then they move there. We get nothing, but we still have all the ill effects.
I'd like to address this gentleman over here's comment that this was strictly a money grab. How we ended up with this 200 acres, we had sold all the property that we bought almost 20 years ago. We, we, we sold, let me, let me speak, please.
Let him talk.
We, we bought property almost 20 years ago. We had sold it to the Army Reserve, Carvana, and RV Nation. We were out of property for our industrial park. Shape came to us and said, we're going to build a new facility. We're looking at multiple locations in multiple states. Do you guys have anything for us? We bought 200 acres. We sold them 50 acres of it. This council worked and staff worked diligently. We got that, that property purchased. We brought it into the city. We rezoned it, and we kept 400 jobs in the city. Okay? That left us with 150 acres additional for our industrial park. That's, that's why that property was purchased, and that's why now it's been resold, you know, as industrial property.
I have the project and Carvana come in here, and I could, I had said many a times online, I'm the Jay Brown online. I said plenty of times, it was a waste of space, a waste of time. Why would you do that? Inevitably, how well did Carvana do here?
They seem to be doing fairly well.
Why do something like this? I mean, it just inevitably, it all boils down to you guys just care about this, not about the people that are being here.
Why would we not care about the money? We have to fund a police department and a fire department.
Time out, time out, time out. I'm going to say this. Let's stop. Chief? Chief?
No, 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 who is you?
So, here's what I will say, if I only cared about the money, I sure wouldn't be up here every night. I spend probably, I spend probably, here's, here's the truth. I spend 20.
Money off of it. It's no different. You could be up here lying, saying whatever you want, just for gullible people to swallow it because you're.
Look, okay, the truth is, you're not going to believe anything that I say.
Because you look out for yourself.
And so the truth is, you're wasting everybody else's time and you should be escorted out the door by the police department.
I'll, I'll make a challenge to you. Hold on, time out, time out, time out. We're getting.
You prove or I've lied to you, I'll give you my check for this month.
Prove it.
Prove what?
Prove it. That we're lying to you, prove it.
Look at all the car washes, look at all the cars. Look at all, all the gas stations, that's all you guys seem to care about in here. Sell, 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 every piece of property.
All we, all right, time out, we're going to stop right now. Number one, stop. Stop.
Please stop inter, interrupting people.
You're not going to interrupt anybody again.
Right.
We need to have other people speak. We understand you're not going to believe anything we say, so I don't see a reason that we're going to continue this conversation.
Well, that's because I'm right, you're wrong.
Chief, please.
On your way out, just listen to one thing. For everybody that has your opinion, there's an equal opinion opposite to it.
That's right.
And they're, they're thankful that this council is doing economic work and development work to bring jobs to this city.
So I, I want to apologize to everybody, I probably should have done that before. Yes, sir.
Yes.
You kind of want to squash some rumors that's going around?
Yes.
I read on article today, I guess it's rumor, that Pro Rigis bought the property already for $7 million.
Yes. Yes.
7.7 million.
7.7, yes.
End of that.
Yep.
So I work at a very large diesel manufacturing company in Columbus, Indiana, and I work, I live here, get all crazy.
Personal choice, it's not crazy.
I work out of, I work out of many, many plants over there, and my original plant that I worked out is a million square foot building. My question to you, as far as city preparedness, what about fire and rescue? If there's ever a fire or any kind of emergency at this plant, if they decide to build?
Right.
Essentially, if they ever decide to build, what are you guys going to do to beef up the fire and rescue for this city? Because how many fire houses do you really have in the city?
So we, we have one firehouse, we also have mutual aid with everybody around us. So we also can call Middletown, Hamilton, and the townships around us. We have mutual aid agreements with all of them.
All right, well, and then the question is, if you're, if you're requesting fire and rescue from outside of the community, what's going to be the response time for that, you know? You got to look at that as well. And then to the lady that was asking about the grid, for the electrical grid, she's right, it's not, everybody knows that our, our cost for our electrical is going to went way up, especially for the carrier. And then you got your kilowatts per hour, the price that you're paying for the electric, but you go way down on second page and they charge you almost the same amount of money for the carrier charges.
Right.
Well, I, just the little amount of research that I've done in the last two days, there, I don't know if anybody knows this or not, but if you go into data, datacentermap.com, there's already 193 data centers in Ohio. 121 of them are in Columbus.
Yes.
24, 21 or 24 are in Cleveland. 21 of them are in Cincinnati. That, I mean, that right there should alarm a lot of people with our electrical grid, because you can't tell me, I mean, this million, if you just do a rough estimate on how much wattage this million square foot building is going to take, it's in a meg, 20, like around 20 megawatts.
Correct.
Megawatts. I'm an electronic engineer, I know how much power that is, and that is astronomical. So what are they going to do? I mean, that's the other thing that you guys need to do, is to do the study on what they got to do to upgrade to electrical grid to get that kind of power to supply power to that, to that warehouse.
So did you notice, did you notice what went into Miller's old parking lot?
Southside of Miller.
That's exactly what they built to do that.
Mayor Perry, can we, can we add there just that the, the service is not ran through the city? The city doesn't.
Unlike water, the city doesn't allocate electric. That's directly to Duke. And whatever the developer does, that's their own negotiation with Duke. We can't control that.
That's fine, but I'm just saying, if you, if this comes into our area, that's what's going to affect everybody. And that has no control of this. I get it, the city does not control that, I get that.
But if it goes in 200 yards down the road, they're going to use the same electric through the same grid.
It's still going to affect us as residents.
Exactly. If it comes to the area, it could affect us.
It will affect us.
But if, if we have it within the city, we at least get the benefits from it also.
Yeah, we're.
Okay, so, sorry.
Now, we will start the meeting, the regular council meeting promptly at 7:30. There is a audience of public in that, so we can continue at that, but I always like to start on time with the city. And you have been patiently waiting back there, thank you very much.
This is just for my own understanding, so I understand what you're saying about if they don't build in the industrial park, that they would just go down the road, and so we lose control. I understand that, but just hypothetically, if they, if Rogers or however you pronounce it, they want to build on that integration, and they need all the ordinances, do you legally have to allow them to build the data center? Or as city council, do you have the right to say, you know, we sold you the land and, but we decided that the bulk of our citizenry does not want it, or we just don't think it's good for us anymore? Do you have that legal right to say that?
What did they get guaranteed with the purchase of that?
So they, they're not guaranteed any. So what they have is, like we said, we, we do not have a site plan. Any site plan would go through the proper processes, the planning commission would be evaluated by all of staff, including police and fire services to it, to make sure that it would be serviceable. In that decision with planning commission, if it is a permitted use, so long as they meet the qualifications of the code, generally speaking, yes, they have the authority to, they have a right to build, you know, they have a property right to do that. But, can, let me finish. But there's also a safeguard on top of that in our code, much like every code throughout the state, that the planning commission can consider and has the ability to deny if there is certain safety characteristics with it that come to, come to light. So there's always an overriding authority of the planning commission to do what's best for the community as a whole, the residential prop, I'm sorry, the adjacent properties to whatever the development is, even if it is a permitted use.
Okay.
So I think her, I'm sorry, I think her question might be, can, can the building permit be pulled if they're not going to follow what you're supposed to? Absolutely, those are two different things. One is the site plan development, two is the operation and outside of the bounds of our code. I'm sorry, I was just taking. Yeah.
So kind of the second part of that, and thank you for that clarification, because I just didn't understand what that meant. So the second piece of it would be, could you, as a council, say, you know, we don't want you to build the data center because two thirds, this is hypothetically, again, but two thirds of our citizens, they, they don't want. Now again, I take your point about them moving. I'm just asking, do you have that ability as a council to say, the people have spoken, they don't want it, don't take their chances? Are you allowed to move?
If it's not based on the safety of the neighboring properties, no, because that is a property right, every individual in the state of Ohio owns property, has, right? They have a vested interest in the property under the zoning code as it's drafted. Now, I want to pivot one point to the informational technology district.
We have one, one minute.
Just, and I guess we'll get to it there, but if that is passed, that, no property is zoned I T. That is a separate process with public hearings. This is just even putting in our books, there's another zoning district that would be in our zoning code. There are zoning codes right now, or I'm sorry, zoning districts in our code right now, that no property are currently zoned. So this would just be another one for an option that we could consider for certain areas. In there, which we'll get into more detail in the regular meeting, includes different, more safeguards than what's otherwise in our industrial general. So we'll talk about.
All right, and it now is 7:30, so.
That's good stuff.
We'll go out of the Ohio.
Okay. So we can, okay.